It's five o'clock and I'd like to get this started right on time. I'm Stu Hardy, a member of the Tiverton Planning Board, and I have volunteered to be the Planning Board Liaison with the University of Rhode Island, a team that is working on looking at those parts of Tiverton that have neither piped water nor sewer, and to take a look at those parts of town to see if the soil types, the topography, the water table are suitable for the separation between septic and wells. And so we're trying to get a much better idea of the hydrology, the geo-hydrology of that part of Tiverton. And so the Planning Board approached URI, and we have Dr. Sonya Pradhanang with us tonight, and she'll be leading the seminar or the discussion of how wells should be tested. But she also has two colleagues on faculty, Dr. Thomas Boving and Dr. Christopher Rusinello, who are also participating in this effort. And we're hoping that we can get at least 30 wells that will give us a statistically accurate overview of what's actually going on with water, underground water, groundwater in that part of Tiverton, which is largely south of Bulgarmar Road and a little bit of the eastern part of Tiverton, east of Stafford in particular. So I'm introducing this because our Chair, Bill Gerlach, has gotten tied up at work, and he works up in the Boston area. So he's going to try to make it later, but in the meantime, we will kick this off. So I would like to ask Sonya to begin by introducing her two colleagues who are graduate students and who are also working on this project. Sonya, you could talk right into that mic, I think.
Okay, if I need to. Well, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sonya Pradhanang. I'm the Professor of Hydrology and Water Quality in Department of Geosciences, which is a part of College of Life and Environmental and Life Sciences in URI, University of Rhode Island. I have two of my graduate students here, Andreas Karma and Shariar Fenshahid. They both are going to be working on collecting data, the data that you give us, and then, you know, we'll be doing lab analysis to come up with some, you know, information for the town. My other student, Gabriela Faustria, was very much involved in making the GIS maps and everyone. She fell in river yesterday and she, I believe, broke her ankle, so she's right now in Rhode Island Hospital getting treated. She was also planning to come otherwise. Give me one second. I have a student outside, so she just... Sorry about that. So Andreas just left. He's my master's student. His thesis is working on developing a flood map for his hometown in Papua, in western Papua, which is a part of Indonesia. And Shariar is a PhD student of my colleague, Chris Rusinello. Chris is a hydrogeologist, and Shariar is working on developing a groundwater model where he's going to have interesting linkages of coastal hydrology with septic system and, you know, what happens to nitrate in groundwater when people are living very close to, you know, coastal areas. You know, what are some of the factors that we have to be concerned about? Like factors like storm surge, factors like hurricane flood, factors like sometimes it's inland flooding, but then also over pumping. You know, those are the things that Shariar is considering to looking into how vulnerable our coastal groundwater are in, you know, in terms of water quality, especially nitrates. I have done similar work where I have focused on saltwater intrusion, and I'm really hoping with the kind of work that we are doing now, with the kind of data that we collect, we will be able to make some, you know, informed decision-making when it comes to planning, when it comes to further development, when it comes to water quality use, you know, water use and so on. So I'm glad that we're all here to talk about this. I'm going to go through some of the maps that I have actually shown in the past meeting, but for those who were not here last time, you know, they get to see how we made this map to identify areas that are vulnerable to many things, including, you know, it could be storm, it could be development, it could be a lot of things. So this map is the first line of business that we did where, you know, we're not emphasizing on any particular feature. We're emphasizing that we're giving priority for everything. Later on, once we have data, we will probably revisit this map and we'll come up with some, you know, information to help you make decisions. So I'm not going to go through the introduction slides that we went through last time. So here is how we came up with this map development specially designed for sampling, you know, or identifying properties or areas that are eligible for, you know, water sampling. That doesn't mean that we're not going to sample the homeowners who are not interested. If there are homeowners who have real interest in getting their water sampled, you know, we're happy to take those water. We bring to the lab. We do, you know, cations and anions, which is basically nitrate, phosphate, ammonia, sulfate, chloride, you know, calcium, magnesium, all these measurements in lab. But then, you know, we will also identify some homeowners who would have interest in getting their water tested for pathogens, if pathogens is of concern. And, you know, that requires a very strict sampling protocol, which we'll show how to do. So in our, you know, like vulnerability map creation, what we have is we have used land use and land cover data, and we have an elevation map. So on the right of this slide is an elevation map with a very high resolution, and the middle one is the land cover. And legends are difficult to read, but each of these color represents some type of land cover. In the land use, you can see all that green land, you know, darker green shades are conservation, you know, leased, the land property. The lighter greens are, you know, parks and open spaces, and you go to the different shades there. There's water, like of Stafford Pond up there. And our goal is to sample representative sampling samples to south of Bulgarmar Road. Again, as I said, you know, there might be some interest north of it, but, you know, we'll decide on how to sample those. But our goal is to make sure that the ones in the south are being covered and are representative of the population in general. So... And then what we did was it's not just land use, land cover, and not just the digital elevation map, which is topographic map. We also put some information on whatever is available right now with us, water table depth, and it gives you that depth in feet there. The red ones are the deepest one, and then, you know, you have the shallow ones. Most of them are quite shallow there, you can see. And the drainage condition. So when I say drainage condition, it represents the soil type. You know, if the soil is very wet, it's called poorly drained. Like, you know, wetland soils, vernal pools, they're all representative of poorly drained or very poorly drained soil, which means, you know, water is always up there. It's always saturated, you know, water table is really high. And then you have like, you know, well-drained, somewhat well-drained. And you can see in that map that, you know, there's red ones, dark red ones are the poorly drained ones. And then you have green, which is excessively drained, which means, you know, the water table depth is pretty deep. So, you know, I'm not going to go through this. This is too much information here. This is also too much information. This is GIS, Geographic Information System Model. For those who are aware of it, you probably know, but this will be a semester worth of class if I go through this. I'm just going to go skip into the results section here. This is where we overlaid all the maps that I showed in our earliest slides, like land cover, land use, digital elevation model, water table depth, and then drainage class. So when we overlay all of them and give equal priority for each of these input, again, we're not emphasizing on any particular input parameters here. We're making this as crude as possible. And when we overlay that and come up with the suitability map, this is what it looks like. And here, what you can see is red is the ones that are vulnerable ones. We did change our slide from the past. So the red ones are the ones, you know, if your property falls in that red zone, you know, you definitely, you know, would like want to be considered. Your waters, you know, should be at least tested. And as you can see there, you know, there are many red zones there all the way to the east. You can see, like, again, find yourself in this property where you are. And if you think that, you know, if you are interested, and I assume you're interested here since you're here, we would like to provide you with, you know, a little short video, you know, workshop on how to collect data, how to collect water. We have water bottles here today. We brought everything to show you how to do it. And, you know, we'll also schedule... You know, we don't want to be scheduling these like few days a week or anything. It's going to be seasonal water sample collections. So we want to definitely cover one summer sample season, and then we will be back for fall. And then, you know, we'll do that for winter and spring so that we capture this entire cycle, you know, hydrologic, you know, year cycle. Summer is important because there's a lot of withdrawal. There's a lot of, you know, like recreational water that's being used, so we want to see what's, you know, what the water table is going to look like. Now, with the water sample that you give us, we won't know what the water table is going to be because we will need to go and measure water table right at the location. And I'm going to show a short video just a little bit after. We do not have an instrument here, but it's basically a measuring tape with a little logger attached to it. And, you know, we'll have to open the well casing, and then we need to put that, just quickly, insert that into water, and it will make a beep noise, and it will tell you what the water level is. So that requires us to be opening the well casing itself, so which is an extra work. And again, you know, only if you give us permission, we do that. You know, this is something that we request homeowners. Not everybody have to volunteer their wells for this particular one. But if you are interested, we would definitely like to access well and measure the water table depth also. We are not going to be putting loggers permanently into your well. It's just going to be like we'll be putting loggers in there just instantly collecting data, and then the water, you know, the logger is going to go out. It will be sanitized, fully cleaned nicely before it goes into anybody else's well. So we follow these protocol very strictly. And, you know, it applies not just for the instruments that we take into the field, but also instrument that we use in the lab. Water sample that we get from you will also be given that full, you know, like sampling protocol and storage protocol, and then analysis protocol will be followed. So this is the, you know, the area that we've identified, and I'll take a little pause here for you guys to just look at it and think about it. And, you know, if you think that you're, you know, willing to provide your well for sampling, great. There's like two levels, actually three levels of sampling here. One is collecting 250 milliliter of water for nutrients analysis. Nutrients and, you know, like as I said, nitrate, phosphate, ammonia, chloride, sulfate, and calcium, magnesium, you know, these like important constituent of water. We analyze that in my lab. I have an ion chromatograph instrument. And then the second part is if you are interested in getting your well tested for pathogens, then that will require one additional level of sampling, which would mean, you know, we'll give you a 100-milliliter bottle, which is heavily sterilized, triple-washed, clean bottle. You will collect water, and we will have to pick that water immediately because it has to be tested within 24 hours. So that's time-constrained sampling. That's the second part. And the third part is your well, if you would like your well water table to be checked, you know, it's going to require us to be opening your well casing and, you know, do a quick water table depth measurement. So with that, I end this slide, and what I'm going to show is a video of how water needs to be collected. If, you know, you end up getting a water bottle, what, how do you, you know, how do you really collect the water? There is, you know, it's not like you just open the tap and fill it out. You know, we do follow a strict protocol. That's what we wanted to show. It's a short video, it's about three minutes. Yeah, it's about three minutes. So, you know, we all have short attention spans, so wanted to make sure that it's not long. We'll show that, and then possibly also show another video where the well water table is being measured. Is that okay? So this video probably does not have any sound. We have not narrated anything yet. So you can see there, clean the tap. That's a water bottle right there. You know, making sure your hands washed properly. That's the, a little Sharpie sampling tips here. So if you're always cold water, you have to run that cold water for around two to three minutes before you actually collect water. And once they're tap water... And also before you, one thing that I'm not sure if this is in there. If your tap is connected to an additional filter, like pure filter, we don't want that water. Your water is already clean. We want to make sure that that unit is taken out of the tap. So it has to be tap water. If you do not want, you know, if you do not want to take the unit out, if you have a sprinkler hose outside, that water is also fine. Or, you know, water from your bathroom, as long as they're all the same water. That's also fine. Making sure, you know, it's really clean. The tap, the little hose in the tap, also you want to make sure it's clean sometime. There's like a little gunk that's, you know, collected. You know, algae gets collected. That will give us a false positive, you know, signal. So we want to make sure that that's also being cleaned. So as you can see here, you know, cleaning your hand very nice, especially if you're doing a pathogen analysis. This becomes extremely important. So leaving the tap to run, you know, five minutes is great. If you don't want to waste five minutes worth of water, two to three minutes is totally fine. Again, make sure that's not hot water. It has to be cold water. And when the faucet is, you know, after you leave it for, you know, three, two to three minutes, the faucet, don't put faucet at the full force, you know, at the slowest force as possible, and then collect water after you mark them all the way to the top without leaving headspace. So this one has headspace, but if you can collect water all the way to the top without leaving headspace, that'd be great. The reason that we don't leave headspace is that allows that additional oxygen to, you know, air to start reacting and change the quality of water. So it is as simple as this. Do you have any question?
I'd just like to take it back a little bit.
Yes.
We have two wells on the property.
Uh huh.
And usually the yellow one is a service well. Will you test both?
If that's necessary, we'll do it, yes. If you want us to.
Well, we don't have a service well for many use whatsoever.
And why so?
Because we have the arches.
Okay, and you, that's cleaner.
I still thought we never had them tested.
Okay. Well, I mean, we can test both. And I believe you are on septic system.
Yes.
So how close is your septic system currently?
About 100 to 100.
All right, so you're...
Yeah.
You can take it from an outside faucet also?
Yes, yes, you can. Yeah, I mean, it's just like too much, like additional work for you, you know, like in the outside faucet. You do have to clean no matter, you know, how you collect water. You want to make sure that there's no rust because that's going to add, you know, like manis and iron to water, which is the one. So, you know, if you don't want that extra work, I, like, thought you could just roll your tap.
Sonya, are people being labeling?
Yes, yes. So we have bottles. We have labeling instruction. We have everything already put in there. So do you want to bring that bottle? And we also have a chain of custody, sort of like a form. So, you know, whenever you're filling these water... And we'll tell you, so Andreas is going to be heavily involved in communicating with all of you and Ed for sure, like when to collect. So we want to make sure that everybody collects water on the same day. So we'll give you a date when to collect, and then Andreas will come and pick it up. You know, like, once it's collected, you're required to put it in a fridge, not a freezer in a cold place, not in the warm area. But yeah, here you go. So... So this, there are two bottles here. So the first one that I say 250-mL bottle, this is the bottle, and that's what you saw in the video. And with this bottle, we have a label that's been created already. It tells you... So what we're going to do is in the chain of custody form, you will have a personnel name in there. But in the bottle itself, we only have address and time of sampling. So that way, you know, we're keeping sort of like, you know, information as confidential as possible. We're not going to be sharing any of these information to anybody other than the town office here. So you're going to be filling this chain of custody form, which will have additional information of who sampled it, whose property is it. But in the label, it's just the address and time of sampling or date of sampling. So based on address, we will go back. The moment we get this form, it will be entered in our system, and we will have ways to track. And then we will put that information in GIS once we will have data. This bottle, it's written as IDEXX. IDEXX is an analytical tool that we use to test pathogens like coliform and enterolert, like the animal-based wastewater-based pathogens. This bottle, you know, can handle a little more than 100 ml, and it has a little line here that shows where 100 milliliter ends. So, you know, this requires 100 ml of water. Sometimes we ask the homeowners to fill this at the full, again, to avoid that oxygen interfering with the, you know, with water. And this is the one that, you know, if you end up getting your water tested for pathogens, we will make sure that this is collected immediately. Immediately, in a sense, within a few hours, and we bring it to the lab, and this has to be tested within 24 hours.
What about water treatment systems? I have very high percentage of homes have some kind of water treatment or time removal.
We, so if you have a water treatment system already put in, we would encourage you not to sample, you know, water from the tap, but maybe a sprinkler water, you know, if you have, yeah. Yeah, untreated water. We do not want to be testing treated water. And I've also heard that the water here is high on carbonate. I mean, line. I don't know. It's just I've heard about it. So I just want to make sure. We'll be doing those tests, you know, like we'll do a quick carbonate test before it goes into the instrument because the instrument is very, very finicky. So we'll make sure that, you know, like the carbonate is removed before it goes into instrument. Yep.
Two questions.
Yes.
Andrew would like about 30 wells.
Yes, ideally it'd be nice to have 30 wells.
Is it limited to 30, or could you do more than 30?
So we could possibly add few more than 30. 30 is not a hard hit number there. You know, we could possibly go up to 35, but we do not want to, like, so sampling is a process, and we have to do this for different, you know, seasons. You know, we are doing different analytical parameters, so it's logistically a lot of effort for us in the lab. And students will be putting a lot of effort in, you know, doing this analytical testing of water. But if there is, you know, let's say we got 40 participants, that would be great. We'll do it. 30 is, you know, we don't even know where that 30 magic number came from, frankly speaking. It's just something that we thought that that's could be handled without us having to panic.
The other question you said, none of the information we share, you know, confidential.
Yes.
But you will share each person's well information with that person?
So, yes. So what we will do is we'll provide data to town, and town will make arrangements to share with homeowners. Does that sound good?
Why don't you explain the 30? You're looking for 30 from a certain region of town.
30 from the south of Bulgarmar's, representing that entire area that I showed before. It's not like 30 in one corner. It's 30 that represents the entire map. So this area, you can see here. So we're thinking south of this area. So there's a lot of like area to cover here.
Where were you pointing, Dr. Christopher?
So the south of this area, and, you know, like, again, lot more of these red-colored area. But if you end up in like the greenish area close to the red area, that would be an interesting place to sample.
But if you're outside of that particular southern area?
Oh, we will do few, we will do few household... Did you say south or north?
No, in other parts of town that have wells, but they're not part of south.
So you mean this area, right?
North of Bulgarmar's.
Yeah, I mean, we are, I mean, I'm happy to take some samples north of Bulgarmar's, but the priority will be on the south, south side. It's not that we're not going to take samples, you know, from the north of Bulgarmar's. We'll take a few of them. The importance that we will give is to the south of the Bulgarmar's Road primarily because they are fed by groundwater system, and, you know, they're all, they're not on public water supplies.
Can I ask why?
Yes.
Why, you know, why are their wells, I don't want to use this word, but I'm going to, why are their wells more important than anybody else's well?
So, so the, I mean, it's not that anybody, this is important versus that's not important because the north, the, most of the homeowners north of Bulgarmar's are supported by public water system. I believe. That's not true?
It's not true, right?
Okay.
The northwest corner.
The northwest corner.
Northwest, this is the public.
Everybody south of Bulgarmar's is serviced by well.
So everybody, 100%.
100%.
100% south. So this becomes priority because they're 100% served by groundwater. This is, I mean, I wouldn't say less priority or so. As I said, you know, I've indicated that we will sample some of the homeowners here. So it could be five or six homeowners as opposed to 25. And if you look at the area-wise, you know, this is like two-thirds of the land, even more than that here. But as I said, you know, I'm happy to take samples, I mean, from 30 to 40 samples. So let's say you have like eight household on this area. We'll do it.
This would include the airport?
That's going to be here. Uh, that's gonna be here?
Yep.
Yes, um, yeah, yeah, this, this definitely includes Nanquod and Nonquod, yep.
And how well, if, if there had been a problem with, with farming in the past?
That's good, that we'll have, we'll, we'll know what's the problems are.
The tenant.
Right, yeah, so, those are the kind of wells that we would definitely like to sample for pathogens also.
Some divisions have been.
Right, right.
Firestone.
Yes. I had a question, sir.
That was another meeting, uh, the watershed park of Stafford Pond is, I just, I understood it as being the highest water level, and it sheds to South Creek Pond.
Uh-huh.
And it also sheds, sheds to Stafford Pond, so would you be interested in those, where the water's gonna go from the new development areas that are in question?
So, yes, scientifically talking, yes, as a science professor, you know, I'm interested in water use, I'm interested in, you know, how much water is gonna be available for, you know, long future, given the context of climate change.
That's not, I'm pretty much sure.
No, but what I'm trying to say is, with this contract that we have received, our focus is to look at the water quality, you know, like, water, uh, availability, uh, for the areas where you have groundwater-fed systems, um, Ed, Stu, Stu is not here, right? So, Ed and, yeah, you guys can, also.
Essentially, what we looked at when we did our tour of town, there's a lot of potential developable land south of Bogomars, where there's 100% well, septic, there's no sewer and no water, there, I understand there's a portion of it north of Bogomars, but the larger area of those homes are south of Bogomars, there's, and there's less potential for sewer and water to go south of Bogomars, not to say that it's gonna happen north of there, but there's less of a chance of that happening, and with the lot sizes that are south of Bogomars, there's possible for bigger, larger residential developments with some of the land that's available there, so that's obviously a concern, so you want to make sure that those areas are tested, and as you can see, there's a big portion of red that is south of Bogomars, and also to the west, which abuts salt, water, so that's another factor when looking at this.
Yeah, and as I said, you know, like, let's say, you know, I'm sampling around eight, eight wells on the south, in the north of Bogomars Road, so that will give us also some sense of what the water quality is, and it will probably help us guide in future if we need to do more sampling, so, you know, let's say, like, you know, we see some interesting water quality in our first sampling season in summer, that might lead us to do more sampling, identify more homeowners, so it's possible that we would do that, but our first line, you know, first summer sampling, we would try to keep it 30 to 40, uh, 40 as a max number for now, um, and we'll go forward from there, yeah.
But this study is based upon the elements that are in the planning status right now, correct?
No.
Or was it instigated by that?
Hmm.
No, okay. So, is there a possibility that you could show us, uh, on paper or on a website specifically where this testing area is, because if we're not in the testing area, we're wasting our time coming here.
Uh, well, so, not specifically, we, we, we intentionally did not identify homeowners in our map, we made this map, like, as vague as possible, for a good reason, to maintain confidentiality, and you can see here, like, let, you know, if, you know, if you're not in this, like, big map completely, then yes, that's not gonna be of, you know, you, yes, you're wasting your time here, coming here, but if you are in, within this boundary of map, and if you are, even if you are in north of Bogomars Road, you still can participate, as I said, um, you know, with lot more emphasis given on the south of Bogomars Road.
So, do you have some wells already in the study?
No, we don't have any wells in the study, this is a very, very first study, we will be getting information, uh, data from the wells that are, um, being monitored, the landfill, you know, wells, there, there are about four wells, apparently that is, um, now have to talk to DPW to get permission to get that data, that will help us also identify, you know, what the water quality concerns are, um, like, how water quality trends are, especially in the landfill sites, and it is also possible that if DPW allows us to monitor those wells, we will put a long-term monitoring logger in there, so we are, you know, management, you know, like, measuring the water table, um, for long term.
As I was saying, like, mostly people from north of Bogomars here, better soon to end up.
Okay.
As the doctor said, we will be taking some of those homes, including those in the study.
Yes, yeah, and then again, as you said, like, if they become questionable in terms of water quality, we will revisit our sampling, you know, uh, schedule and sampling protocol, and it's possible that we will increase the number of sampling, how, you know, homeowner sampling sites.
Are you interested in samples from non-potable wells?
Non-potable wells, how?
A number of people have done saltwater intrusion.
Yes.
I know properties that have no well.
Mm-hmm.
They just have water delivered.
They have just water delivered because the wells are saline, um, yes, and those are the kind of wells that I would happily install logger to monitor long-term impacts, but again, you know, that would require us to open well casing and put loggers, loggers are, you know, they don't carry any contaminants, they just sit there, but it will help.
There's a case in here.
No, right.
There's dug wells.
Dug wells, I mean, if, if they are usable, we would, I would definitely like to, you know, monitor those wells to understand how water table fluctuates over time, and whether or not storm surges are impacting the quality of water, these water, you know, loggers will not just, uh, check your water table depth, but it will also, uh, monitor salinity, um, and temperature of water, so that will allow us to look at, like, you know, when does the salinity go up, you know, when it's, is it when somebody's pumping water a lot? Is it during the dry season, is it during the storm surge, and is it coming through inundation, you know, like, overtopping of water, or is it like a slow creeping underneath? So, we can do that study.
You mentioned that, uh, strange water table wells, uh, only certain wells have been mentioned to the water table, uh, isn't that, isn't that kind of a baseline thing that should be valid in the study?
That is a part of the study, I said certain well, certain wells only because I will need permission from every homeowner to allow me to open the well casing, to put this well, you know, the little sensor on, and then measure water, so not everybody would like to do that, and I'm just being very, you know, sensitive here, you know, like, in trying to make sure that you're okay, if you're okay, I'm okay, uh, you know, if you're not okay, I will not touch the well, that's all.
It's not an important reference point to your study.
Yeah, well, I mean, ideally, yes, if you can, if I can measure all the wells for water table, that's great, if not, we can, you know, take a representative water table, like, you know, out of 30, 40 wells, if I can sample 10 or 15 for water table, that's still good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Doctor?
Yes.
I have two questions, one is, uh, are you interested in cases where, uh, one person has water throughout all four seasons, and the neighbor two stores down, their water table lowers significantly because of the water comes from fractured bedrock?
Right.
It's not an even draw, like an aquifer.
Yeah, so this is a very interesting hydrogeological question, I mean, interest-wise, yes, uh, from this, uh, contract, you know, we might not be able to go to that level of, you know, modeling study, it will require us to develop a full-fledged hydrogeologic model, and that would be, and, you know, again, time and, you know, financially, sort of like, extensive compared to this, but, so this, this study will help us guide which direction we will possibly need to go, and if you feel like, you know, if you know those homeowners, and if they, these homeowners are willing to provide their well for testing, both for water table and for water quality, and, you know, we can happily do that, to start collecting data, for, you know, to start with, and then, and then we can move forward from there, it'll give us at least some sense of what's going on in the area.
Now, this, uh, possible leachate from the, the dump?
Yep.
Does that play out in this at all?
Well, with the water quality that you see testing data, you will get to know what type of nutrients are in there, and if there is, you know, leachate can have anything and everything in water, uh, if we see very high, uh, con- you know, constituents of nitrate, phosphate, sulfate, and other, you know, cations, um, we will, you know, come up with some justifiable conclusion, whether it's coming from leachate, whether it's coming from septic system, you know, where is it coming from, fertilizer application, it could be anything.
Because there was a time when you'd get bright orange coming down the ditch, coming alongside the road.
A lot of manganese.
Into the landfill.
Right, right, that's very, that sounds like a lot of metal in there.
It's capped now.
Yeah.
It's still not a line.
Okay.
Landfill.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, that's why it'd be interesting to look at the observation wells along the landfill site, to, you know, look at their water quality data, um, that will give us some information, and if, again, if they allow us to put the monitoring, sort of like, a long-term monitoring, like, um, a logger, we, I'll happily put them there, right?
It's a question for the town, uh, excuse my ignorance, maybe I don't know what the purpose of this, uh, study is, but, uh, is the data, results of the study gonna be used, uh, for determination of future development areas?
I'm not going to call determination, I think, right, I don't think that's a fair characterization, it's going to be information that the town will use to assess whether future projects are viable.
Right, so will we, yeah, okay.
I'd call it informed decision-making, helping informed decision-making, sort of like, for planners and managers.
Thank you.
Was that the basic concept of executing this study?
I don't know your question, sir.
Oh, what, well, who suggested the study, I mean?
Not personally, but.
The changes in state laws opening up what are called floodgates to development in the town, as well as the number of applications the town is receiving, and our duty to best, best utilize the resources in the town.
Terrific, that's what I was looking for, so that prompted the use of a study, right?
The study is overdue.
Yeah, good, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just beginning, but, I live in Nanquod, and, and the people who are bare-nan mode, if anyone's here that invited, their wells, they went to the town council like, a year ago, or two years ago, and said that their wells had already become, um, contaminated due to saturated soils, and at the time, the town was looking at a, um, development across the street, and there were vehicles that, if they filled in all wetlands and mountains, that, that there wouldn't be people even lived in, never mind, they'd already lost the use of their wells.
Yeah.
And I would hope that, that these residents would be taken into consideration at high priority, since they're already suffering, and, uh, not, most development is happening in Nanquod, where we have very saturated soils, and many houses were built on wetlands and marshes that had been piped, and all those pipes are breaking now, and so there are neighborhoods, even that, they had to, Nanquod had to put in stormwater drains, decades and decades ago, because not to carry stormwater, but to allow homeowners to hook their pump directly into the drainage, so that they didn't have to, so when they were pumping 24/7, 365, it wasn't out in the road, it was going into the storm, and since then, the development has become worse, and the, uh, said that Mount Hope, uh, Mount Hope Day watershed is already 21% overbuilt with, um, non, um, non-polished surfaces, and non-perished.
Non-perished, yeah.
Yet the town continues to want to build there, and, uh, marshes are getting significantly lost, we, we, people, people are, multiple pumping continually now, and the also marshes are taking down.
Okay.
And I would hope that, with the very extent of groundwater, we would be looking at spaces that currently have issues with saturated soils, as opposed to just looking at the future of who might have saturated soil in the future.
So, we're not looking at who might have saturated soils in future, that's not even taken into consideration, where the, the base map that we created is based on current saturated soil conditions, or whatever saturated soil conditions map is available to us, um, we haven't even thought about climate change, we haven't even put that in context at the present, um.
No, it's, it's like, we're, we're looking at people, we're looking at, I hate to say it, but we're looking at people who have, who have a higher, who have richer and higher houses, and we're looking to protect them in the future, but we're not looking at the Nanquod area where the, where the range of, where, where people have a more moderate income, and they're already affected, they're already, uh.
Yeah, well, thank you for, thank you for bringing this up, when we created this map, there was no way that, to figure out who's rich and poor here, you know, it's all, no, we didn't even put the homeowners' information in here, as you can see, is the overlay of land use map, overlay of topographic elevation map, it has an overlay of drainage class, which is whether the soil is saturated or not, and it has an overlay map of existing water table, a very crude water table, so the four map layers that's been put in, in here, um, based on that, we identified areas that could be at risk, again, I said could be at risk, because there's a lot of other things that isn't even, you know, put into the input yet, if I were to create a full-fledged hydrogeologic model, it will require a lot more input than what I have put in here, um, regarding what you just said, you know, I would defer this to town about, like, you know, what the situation is, you know, we're, we're looking at the areas where I definitely see as concern, and you can see that all the red areas are supposedly concerned areas, you know, whether it's north of Bogomars or south of Bogomars, so.
Economics had nothing to do with this, other than how much money the town has to spend for a first step in, in getting the information it needs.
Yes, well, from the very beginning, after, after, we have tied a lot of study for the Nan, and it was totally ignored by people, by, by people planning it, all, most of them who wanted it, they're south of Bogomars, and they ignored, they ignored the whole request to, to look at Nanquod, to look at what's happening in saturated soils, and when people were bare-nan mode, came to the town council and finding it, that our soil had ruined our, our wells, it was like, oh, well, tough, you know, it's like tough, but then people, people from, some people from Wupur, in the capital, from south of, of Tiverton, was like, oh, but I'm so worried about my well, and it's like, oh, all of a sudden, it's like, we're, we're very concerned, we're very concerned about it, but, but we totally ignored the people in Nanquod when they came, and we totally ignored it, um, what's happening in Nanquod with the saturated soils, and, and, um, if this is in a study, when does the town plan on looking at what's happening in Nanquod?
That's a conversation for a different day, Ms. French, thank you, if you have questions about how the doctor's gonna perform this testing, we'll certainly answer those.
Ready? Well, again, we will sample some of the homeowners north of Tiverton, we're not gonna be fully excluding, um, again, about, it will be probably around eight homeowners, so if you fall in that category, and if you know, if you know homeowners who would be benefiting from this sampling, let us know, and promote, uh, participation, for sure, you know, we would need around 30 to 40 samples, um, and, again, you know, help us get, uh, water, yep.
Just for clarification, you said you would take a few places north of Bogomars?
Yeah, maybe around five to eight, let's put it that for now, um.
There was a spill here, not many years ago, and the town had to bring, well, the state had to bring in water for the residents, and it's partly sloped to the east.
Okay.
I talked to an engineer, not a couple weeks ago, and he remembered, and said it went up. and he remembered and said it went up Stafford Pond.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be cautious to do that.
Okay.
You can probably have the information with the state.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I, we did develop a, um, harmful, you know, treatment protocol, Aldo Bloom protocol for Stonebridge for the Stafford Pond in 2020. So I've got some information there.
Sony, can you clarify, just, if we do sampling from different areas, it's, it's good to have a diverse group, correct?
It's good to have diverse group, you know, well, you know, it has to be randomized. It, you know, I, I'm not going to be sampling just the shore. You know, it has to be representative of all population, all, all land use type. Um, and, you know, like, spread out. So, um, not just close to Nonquod Pond or not just close to the, you know, road or not just close to four square, you know, the four corners. Um, but, you know, as representative as possible. Any question? How many of you are willing to volunteer your well? I mean, I call, I would label whoever have their well sampled as either citizen scientists or science ambassadors because you are helping us, you know, generate data to make informed decision for a town and for yourself.
And we did put a sign-up sheet.
Yes, okay. And, you know, if you were willing to, we'll give you a sample bottle, we'll give you a chain of custody form. Uh, we also have our own sign-in sheet also. Um, and Andreas and Gabriina and Shariar will communicate with each of you with information when to sample so that he can come, you know, group can come and pick it up all at once somewhere, easy location, so that we don't have to go to each homeowners unless you have water table, you know, depth measured, yes.
So those of us who have already sent Ed an email, you want us to sign up again tonight, is that correct?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes. Okay. And I will share the video that we have created. I'll make sure there's a narration in there so that, you know, everybody knows, uh, can, can hear and watch. But we also have a one-page, like a written, like a outreach document so that you can read it for sampling process. Um, so there's some documents, I definitely encourage you to read. Uh, but whenever you are filling water in your sample bottle, please make sure the chain of custody form is completely filled.
We will also post the one-page directions.
Yes.
And video.
And the video on the website, yes. Yeah, and also, one more thing I would, I would encourage you to do is, um, take a picture of the chain of custody form that wants you fill. That way you have a copy of it, you know, and, and then if we end up losing it, we can always reach out to you, things, things do happen. Does that sound good? Great, thank you so much. Thank you very much for coming. And I was worried that I won't have any audiences here, but I'm glad to see you all here.